Attention please, welcome for the zoning board of September 27, 2016. My name is Marty Aiken, I'm the chairman. My left, your right, Mr. Cavais, vice chair. Mr. Franco, sorry about that. Get to that part. Uh, Mr. Chin, Mr. Ray Dell, behind me, a new member, Mr. John Hamel. Hamel. And, uh, beside me, the clerk, Ms. Murphy. And behind me is the fore inspector in service, Commissioner Ralph Crammer. If you have a cellphone or a pager, would you please put it on silent not to interrupt the meeting? If anyone's gonna speak tonight, would you please stand up and raise your right hand? Anyone that wants to testify tonight, please stand up and raise your right hand.
Do you swear to the truth, the house truth, not the blood truth to help you die?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Could I have another motion to waive the reading in a minute, say 2316?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes until September 13.
The second? Correction, at 23rd. Oh, 15.
13.
On favor?
Aye.
Close some more. Uh, I have a letter here, uh, that I called the guy today and asked him not to show up. And that's 45 Shannon Street. What they were supposed to do was demolish that property before they got here. And they haven't done that yet, and, uh... So I wanna move them all the way down on November 15th. And, uh, we all understand the place is messed down there, they haven't cleaned it up, but we got a lot of things to talk about on that property when they do show up. Cover me up.
Mr. Chairman, now, number 16-037, made from, from, for use of architects, very liberating to the knowledge and existence of the single family home and garage in this part two, single family dwelling, to the premises number 45 Shannon Street, Quincy, I make a motion to extend the hearing until November 15th.
Second? On the motion, seeing none on favor?
Aye.
Close some more. All business, case number 16057. Nancy Tower for variance to construct an addition on the premises number 33 Broadway. The applicant, their representative here. Please step forward, there's no podium, state your name and address for record, please.
So I will give a very...
Your name?
My name is Yazitare. I live in 33 Broadway, Quincy. Uh, I have this single house. And I wanted to change occupancy in two family house, uh, in order to have, uh, a master of variance, provide for the front addition. An existing front wall and a rear addition with existing north wall.
So what you do is you move in the back 11 feet, 12 foot six of the corner, and then coming up and squaring it off, is that correct?
Yes.
And I see a new set of plans here with two doors in the front.
Yeah.
Any questions with the applicant?
I just have one who got this together pretty quickly. I was looking to see if we were able to do that because this does look like a different kind of, you know. I've got to stay without a question, I'm sorry.
Any questions? Frank, Mr. Chin, no questions.
Ray Dell, this time.
Thank you, you may have a seat. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Speak in favor, first call, second call. Third call, close. Correspondence? No correspondence. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call, second call. Third call. Close. Uh, I think it's a nice bar, I was, I was down, I met the applicant today, it was, uh, looking at a property, a nice big piece of property. I don't think he's opposing on anybody, gonna make his property a lot better looking. Tax bill might go way up. I hope this helps everyone in the room. With that, I'll be voting in favor, I think you get a nice big property.
I, I think that this proposal is a little more, uh, together than what you had before, so, uh, I'll be voting in favor.
I agree with you, you took the break and came back with this, I'll be in favor as well.
Make your favor.
Your favor. The motion, please.
This candidate, number 16-057, that's a park or a variance to construct an addition or premises, actually, I don't know how to call that, number 33 Broadway, Quincy, I make motion to grant the variance.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, seeing none on favor? Close some more. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Further on the whole business, case number 16045, William Kelly, for variance to subdivide the existing lot into two house lots on the premise number 13 Dundee Road. Is the applicant and their representative here? Second call, is the applicant and their representative here? Third call. That motion is mine, please.
This chairman, the man of 16-045, William Kelly, for variance to subdivide the existing lot into two house lots on the premises number 13 Dundee Road, make a motion to deny the variance.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, I will, I will say this, this is, we've, we've, we've done this a few times for this guy. And, uh, he don't have the decency to show up or state his case or his property, so we're gonna do a bar, so with that, I'll be voting in favor.
I think we'll flip it.
Does vote? Close in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Come on. Is there anyone here at the Dundee Road? You may all go.
Are they prohibited from coming back? Two years.
Two years.
Great, we'll see in two years. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to show up, and I know it's tough.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Under all business, case number 16047, West Street Property LLC, for variance finding to remove the existing two-family home, replace with eight townhomes on the premise number R264 West Street. The applicant, their representative here, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Edward Fleming, I'm here on behalf of Stephen Bayless of West Street Property LLC, regarding the property you identified as R264 West Street, West Quincy. As the, uh, as the board may well remember, this is a continuation of the matter that was initially presented in August of 2000, of 23rd, 2016. However, because it's been some time, I'm gonna take a couple of minutes just to review the overall proposal, and then we can highlight and talk about really the changes, or the revisions that we've made. Those revisions specifically dealing with the driveway, where issues were raised as concerns. Just very briefly, this is a property that's a 28,411 square foot parcel of land. It consists right now of a large 5,000 square foot, uh, two-family house. And the lot is set back significantly from West Street. West Street runs in this area here on the plan, and the, and the site is set back, uh, a good distance from West Street, and has provided access by way of a 20-foot right-of-way that was provided to the site in 1956, when this lot was created. The lot was created prior to zoning, and the, and the, and the use of the property has been a pre-existing non-conforming, um, use. And, as, as I indicated, it's provided, um, access by way of a 20-foot easement, however, the driveway that was actually constructed for the two-family house that, that, um, the property exists of presently, uh, is only about a 12-foot driveway. As I indicated, the home on the site is quite large, it's about 5,000 square feet in total size, about 2,500 square feet living space. Uh, it's become very deteriorated over, over the years. Uh, there's essentially unsheltered parking at the end of the driveway that you can see from West Street as you look down, down on the driveway. Uh, what Mr. Bayless is proposing, and we presented on the 23rd, is to remove the existing two-family house, and, and replace it with eight, uh, townhouse-style units in three buildings consisting of, uh, four units on one building, and then two, two-unit buildings. And those buildings are laid out here, as you can see on the plan, as a four-unit building on the side of the property as it enters into a driveway and a parking area, and then two, two-unit buildings. Each of the units will, will be three stories in total height. Uh, under each building will be a two-car garage, providing two spaces per dwelling unit. And then there's an additional five spaces that are created in the parking area that will be created on the site. The total parking, therefore, provided for the site is 2.6 parking spaces per unit, which exceeds their minimum lot area, uh, look, the minimum requirement of the zoning ordinance by providing additional parking spaces, not only for the residents of the buildings, but visitors to the site, uh, to ensure that there's no parking on the street, or parking within the driveway, which we'll talk about in a second, um, or parking on neighborhood properties, or any interference in that matter. Uh, this is a residence B zoning district, which allows, as you know, multi-family type uses. And as a large, as a large site, at 28,000, almost 29,000 square foot length, but it provides for and allows for, uh, a multiple, um, family use. Because of the non-conforming nature of this property, however, and because the site is set back, having been created in 1956, and is, um, and is provided access only by way of the right-of-way, we're here before this board seeking a finding to allow for the change of use from a two-family house to a multi-family house, uh, or, or eight units. And we're also seeking dimensional barriers from the ordinance that are all spelled out in the application that's been provided to this board. Those dimensional issues related to frontage, although I believe that that can be dealt with and addressed through the finding, setback, uh, provisions in the, in the, um, from the side setback, lot size per dwelling unit, and FAR. Now, mind you, as I talked about, this is a large lot, it's a 29,000 square foot lot. Um, and, uh, and what we're, we're requesting here today is far less dense than many other properties within the same area, including a building to the rear of the property that sits on a site that, that, uh, provides for 12 units in a brick apartment building, uh, another building, uh, to the, to the right of the site, which is a 10-unit brick building that, that's on a, a much smaller site. Um, and in this particular proposal, we're proposing or are providing 3,552 square feet per dwelling unit of land, uh, in addition to 2.6 parking spaces, uh, per unit. In addition to the existing homes, or the existing properties that I identified as which are 268 West Street, the 10-unit building, and 25 Schleger Avenue, the 12-unit building. Interestingly enough, the 10-unit building provides only 1,297 square feet of, of land area per unit versus the 3,500 that we're providing here. And the 12-unit building in the rear provides for 3,125 square feet per unit, still less than what we're providing here. In addition to those two existing buildings that exist in the, in, in very close proximity to this, this board has enacted, or, or acted on other proposals within the same community and the same neighborhood.
Counsel, I think our main concern, if we ever had a hearing, was talking about your neighbors.
Sure. Okay. I just wanted to give, I just wanted to give it over.
I think we all know that, I think everyone that's been in the room knows that, in testimony.
I'll move along.
I think what we have to do is talk about what we wanted, what get done, if you got that.
So the, at the, at the last, I just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, at the last meeting, there were a number of issues of concern that were raised, issues like drainage, um, the, the driveway, or the safety of the driveway to allow for two vehicles to pass, so that it wouldn't, it wouldn't, uh, cause vehicles to back up onto West Street. There were issues, general issues of traffic concerns about a multi-family use, the appropriateness of the multi-family use in the area, and as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, the issues relating to an encroachment from a neighbor's, on a, on a neighbor's property. The gentleman who lives, um, in this, in this home, or actually doesn't live, but, but owns this property, raised concerns about an, an encroachment, um, that the 20-foot easement that was, or right-of-way that provided access to the site actually encroached upon his existing driveway. And he, he raised that as a real true concern, and raised, uh, the idea that he may be entitled to an adverse possession claim. Uh, since the time of that meeting, we've had meetings with him, his name is Stephen Conley, he was represented, if you remember, by Brian Conley, attorney in Boston. And, uh, numerous meetings with him, to the point where we revised the plan by shifting the driveway away from his property, and minimizing or eliminating the encroachment by moving the driveway over. We had, if you remember, a 20-foot accessway, which was more than, more than needed even at the time, and what it did is provided for landscaping on both sides. What we did is we eliminated the landscaping and shifted the driveway over, but still maintained the 16 feet of width in the driveway, uh, to ensure that there was safe egress and, and use of the site. What that did is that it, that eliminated or minimized the encroachment on Mr. Conley's property, and Mr. Conley, uh, and we, and we agreed to modify the plans accordingly, and Mr. Conley submitted a letter to the chairman. I have a copy of it, and I'll submit to the board, where he agreed to withdraw his objection, and appreciated the effort that Mr. Bayless made in, in addressing those concerns. In addition to that...
Can I ask one question?
Yep.
It was raised in their opposition, as I recall, that this particular property has really no frontage, right? How do we address that?
Well, has frontage by way of a right-of-way, and as I said, the plan was created in 1950... About 20 feet.
Yeah.
20 feet, which is the minimum frontage requirement that's needed in order to develop the site. And it does have that 20 feet of frontage, and that right-of-way was created, uh, by, by a, a plan, as I said, in 1956, and I have a copy of that right-of-way, but I believe I submitted that to the board as well, but provides exclusive use of that right-of-way for this particular property. So in that way, I believe we addressed the, the, the frontage issue. To, to address the issues related to drainage, um, and, and other, and other, and the access of, and use of the driveway, which was important questions that, that were raised by the board, um, we worked, as you know, with the planning department through the site plan and review process, and during that time, the, uh, all the city departments submitted comment letters, the peer review submitted comment letters, and we responded to each and every one of those comments. Um, and each of those departments and the peer review consultants submitted letters indicating that we had appropriately satisfied their concerns, and as such, and as a result, the planning department, or the board, at the last meeting on September 14th, approved the project by way of site plan approval. And that approval has been issued, indicating in that decision that issues related to drainage, issues related to traffic, issues related to the impact of the neighborhood had been appropriately addressed. And obviously, that's subject to this board's ultimate decision. So that site plan review approval has been issued.
And I know we talked about the property and his objections, he said he owned that.
That was squared, I took it, correct.
Right.
With that letter, I would say that's all.
There will be no adverse possession claim, and agreement was reached, that, that there will be no further use of that area of the, of the right-of-way, that's been essentially abandoned by way of the easement, of, by way of the agreement, and, um, and, and the driveway has been shifted over to accommodate that issue.
And you're still gonna...
And we're actually doing some, some additional improvements, there was some, I believe Mr. Conley had some, um, some sprinklers, uh, underground, um, irrigation system installed, and we're gonna repair that and repair the driveway after we develop this site.
Is there gonna be any shrubbery coming up on his side of the property?
There's shrubbery right now, that, that provide, that along the front of the area that will not be impacted, and that's gonna remain, so it's gonna shield any parking that he has. And the other benefit of, of sliding the driveway over too, is that there was a utility pole located in the area where the driveway was gonna be. By shifting the driveway over, we eliminated the need to remove that pole, and, um, and that's been eliminated from the plans as well. Now, I know that, uh, the neighbor here, who has an attorney that also had submitted a letter to the board raising some concerns, and those concerns are very much similar to the concerns that were raised by the neighbors at the last meeting. In fact, Mr. McDonough, uh, the neighbor in the rear, I believe, uh, he, the owner or resides in a home within this area, um, and had inquired about purchasing the site himself. Uh, he raised some concerns about, about setback, and generally, uh, about the development of the site. I had tried to reach out to him, and that's the reason why I requested a continuance of the last meeting, in an effort to try to do exactly what we did with Mr. Conley, and try to work through concerns, and I was, I would advise that there was no interest in speaking to us. And so, what we've done is really just concentrated on trying to address the issues and concerns that were raised by the, the, um, the planning board and the department, and all the peer review engineers. Now, now, I think what's important to understand, and certainly you understand as a board, but the neighbors to understand, is that there's a lot of work and a lot of time and effort that goes into these matters, that, um, through the peer review process. And this peer review engineer is an independent engineer that's been hired by the city to make sure that everything here in this site is addressed appropriately, from drainage to traffic to, to other matters. Um, and, uh, and we've done that here, we've worked very hard for the last three, four months to deal with those issues. The other thing that I thought was really important, and something that the board raised a concern about, was the ability of two vehicles to pass, and we have a plan, I'll, I'll have, uh, this, uh, Greg, I'll talk about that in a second, but, and the, the fire department had not yet reviewed the plan the last time we were here, and they have since submitted a letter indicating that they are comfortable, that they have appropriate access by way of 16-foot driveway that will be provided to the site, so that they'll have access to, um, for fire protection. And they, what they requested, however, was that there be no parking in the driveway, and hence, I said, I come back to that. And we believe that we've provided adequate and sufficient parking, so that there's no parking in the driveway. So if I could submit that letter to you as well, Mr. Chairman, that the fire department has satisfied with this. With regard to the... With regard to two vehicles passing, there were some concerns raised by the neighbors that the driveway was too narrow. And I think many of the neighbors don't, uh, maybe are looking at the existing driveway, seeing that a 12-foot driveway would certainly be too narrow to pass. So what was created on the plans, and this was also shared with the planning department, is we should, we show, we show within the driveway that two vehicles can easily pass each other, so that the vehicle that would be pulling into the driveway would not have to back out onto the street. So not only can two vehicles pass, but, but also a fire truck in a vehicle can pass within that driveway, uh, safely. Notwithstanding that, we made very clear, and, and as part of the condition of the planning board's decision, that there will be no parking in the driveway, or other obstruction to the driveway, so that will always remain open, uh, for any fire access. So we can certainly get, get into more details on the plans that, that have been submitted. Much of the information was shared with you at the first meeting.
Right.
But we can certainly, uh, talk about any, any questions that the board may have.
Right, I think, I think our main questions were on, uh, that access, who owned it, and how you gotta fix it, so. And drainage, which is an issue, that's all set, so I got that. Any questions on the applicant?
I just want, sure, I appreciate the fact that Mr. Conley worked together, because that was, that was not a pleasant thing to be dealing with. Your plan, or deed, or something is gonna be put on record, so if Mr. Conley goes to sell that property at some point, that there's not gonna be any question if he owns the year, or there's easements, or whatever, you said it all up, so that's not gonna come back?
We did, through his, through his, his attorney.
Through his Boston attorney?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
There's only twenty, pretty much.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question about your guest parking, keeping people from parking on that driveway, what are your accommodations for guest parking?
So in addition to the two vehicles per unit, which are located underneath the building, there's an additional five spaces that are located here. Uh, this area here has remained open for the purposes of, 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 uh, fire apparatus being able to turn, but it also is available for guest parking when there's no fire or, or emergency situation, and there's also area at the end if, if needed. Uh, so there's actually more, we don't line these out here because we, we don't want people to park there on a regular basis, but for short-term visitors, that space will be available.
Even mark as finally?
Pardon?
Even mark it as a final?
Yeah, I believe there'll be some, some markings to indicate that, um, that, uh, there no long-term parking for the purposes of fire apparatus to turn. So yeah, I believe that's what written with, in the planning board decision as well.
We don't get to say that.
Yeah, I'm surprised, but I, I don't think it's been finalized yet, as far as...
Thank you, counsel. I think, uh, everything that I asked for that property, it's not been done yet. We've already heard a testimony, so I turned to you and say aye and nay. And I think you've done it. I think it's really a nice, a nice piece of property, and it's gonna change, it's gonna change look, it's gonna look nice, I really do, I really think it's, it's, it's not gonna add to the traffic, really, you get eight, eight units, and West Street is West Street, it is what it is here, it's not the people, they use West Street, talk of West Street. Live West Street, they just use it as a cut, some should be done about that with the city, between certain hours, I don't know, but that road is just ridiculous, there's a more country, which is like, trying to get over the bridge with two lanes, it's ridiculous. With that, I'll be voting in favor.
I'm not real crazy about the sprawl of it, actually, I know everyone else thinks it's so great, we're giving them all the space, but to me, it's like we're wasting space putting it down. I don't know, I, I kinda like the building idea, but, uh, is Mr. Tanji here today to talk about something, though?
He's here to answer any questions about engineering.
Yeah, you can ask him.
If you have any questions, I think we can go.
No, I'm not gonna ask, because he's well respected in the community. No. One sec. Okay, thank you.
Frank? I agree, they've responded, they've had all the city departments in line, improving and sending letters, Mr. Conley has scored away, I'm gonna improve the property, I don't have a concern over the traffic either, I'll be in favor.
Ray Dell?
Second.
On motion, please.
This candidate, number 16-047, West Property LLC, for variance finding to remove the existing...
Excuse me, were you getting any air from anybody else?
No, testimony's already been had.
No, it hasn't, sir.
Yeah, it has.
I haven't been able to see it this evening. You should've been at the meeting when we had our meeting. The only thing I asked...
What's that the last to do?
Didn't you continue? Well, you're out of line. Chris?
Number 16-047, West Street Property LLC, for variance finding to remove the existing two-family home, replace it with eight townhouse-style units on the premises number R264 West Street, Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance in the finding.
Seconded?
Second.
On the motion, seeing none on favor?
Aye.
Close some more.
Thank you, very much.
Further on in tonight's whole business, case number 16059, Murphy Realty, trust reviewing special permit to construct a 28-unit residential building with parking in two street levels and 57 Quincy Shore Drive, the applicant and their representative here.
Yes, we are, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, this, yeah, sorry, I don't... Because you can use it, right? Yeah, I'm saying that.
I don't care, it's not mine, you think it's like me, somebody asked me to do something, and he didn't. Oh, it's not, oh, we did, we did, we did. No, I say, please step outside, we're trying to conduct a meeting here, thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, three members of the board, my name is Bob Heiness, I represent Murphy Realty Trust. Mr. Murphy's been before right now. We're speaking about a lot, at the 7 Quincy Shore Drive, it's a 12,521 square foot lot, it's own residence, if the board's familiar with it, right now it's Murphy Brothers' vol strike. Murphy Brothers' vol strike has presently had moved away that they've opened a new location, they need a bigger location, but they wanna maintain control of this property, they wanna But they want to maintain control of this property, they want to sit this law on this property. So what they're proposing is the building maintain a 28-unit residential building, two-bedroom apartments ranging from 900 to 500, 100, 300 square feet. Each of these dwelling units will have two pockets. I know there's a problem in parts of Quincy effect, except I believe using 1.5. We have a two pockets spot per unit, then we're also having underground pockets, two-level pocket underneath the building. Now, if you look at this building, as you're coming over the bridge, it's the first thing you see. And while we're coming forward for certain variances that outline in the application, but what we're trying to do is make this the focal point of the address. First, you have the other pocket on Hancock Street, the first one on your left as you come in, and then you're going to see this building, next building. We're looking for variance we've got to height at six, six-fourty-one. One of the things Mr. Murphy had asked in the past is, when you build apartments and condos, because he wants to maintain control. He's been there for 40 years, he doesn't plan on leaving, he wants to perform that property, maintain that property. So we're looking to develop apartment buildings. As the board knows, there are a lot of apartments going up. And as they go up and as well, there's been a certain development of the building, they're being scooped up by young professionals. This is three quarters, this is three tenths a mile away from the train station. As the board knows, there's other projects coming down the pipe, going on that same location, all toward commuters that come in, work in town. We're asking for the variance. The height grievance is an issue, though it's six units, I'm sorry, it's right at six floors. It's going to be consistent with all the other buildings there. So we're not building a dinosaur in a neighborhood that are all just residential houses. It's not. People across the street, there are two units. Down the block, there's another, it's an actual big complex there. So we're looking to build a six unit. In the driveway, you'll see, as you come over the bridge, this is what you're going to see. This is what you're going to see. And why we have it as far as this is going to be very attractive building. We are looking for variances for the front and side setback. We're also looking for variance in the FAR and also on the heights. Again, we're proposing this as an attractive building for the city. Now, we have a neighborhood meet, just so the board knows, neighborhood meet October 5th for the planning board. We're pretty far away from the planning board right now. We're going to be submitting plans there shortly. They're private doing, so we're going to have a neighborhood meet on October 5th to address as far as technical review. Where specifically for those variances that would be required and go further? If you don't hit the variance, obviously you couldn't go further than the planning board. But this has, we have had bond with needs of the planning board now for the last few months. And one of the issues they brought up was the pocket. And the pocket had to be two per unit, and we've addressed that. I think we're going forward in the right direction. I think this is a building that's going to be much better than no offensive and I never meant to be offensive Murphy, that's better than what's there right now. The Volkswagen dealership repair shop is not consistent anymore. So I think this would be better off. And I'd ask the board to consider the variance in the question. I think they're, and the hardship, I mean, one of the concerns the board has, the hardship. If you look at the shape of the lot itself, it's on a normal shaped lot. The hardship is the fact that the shape is one of the concerns they have. Get the building that's there, the right building like that, the hardship is the actual shape of the lot. That's why the site will set back to that issue.
Council, what's something outside of that building? What is that?
As far as?
The exterior, what is it?
Brick and metal panels.
That top thing is a decorative?
Yeah, this is the stairway tower, maybe the gateway and something like that.
Could be red or something like that? Or could, could it be?
Potentially could be.
Well, what they do propose, just so you know, is going to be an optional plan, where to propose to talk, very top of it, as a place that people can go, the residents can go and have like functions. So they propose that they have a rooftop function area. That from that could be on the show of Boston.
And then the balconies, district units get balconies?
Yes.
Where's the entrance to the lot?
The entrance would be, as far as the parking, it should be two pockets. And as far as the entrance to the parking, it'd be quite pretty much.
But that's on the Quincy Shore Drive?
Quincy Shore Drive.
Is it on the Quincy Shore Drive?
So there are 29 parking spaces on the first level here.
Yep.
That comes off Quincy Shore Drive and off of... Right off the back row? Yeah, on the back row, on the other side, there's 28 units on it. So this is actually a level of parking.
And just so you know, one of the concerns we had is making that entrance on Quincy Shore Drive. That is exactly where it goes through two to three lanes. So as you get into the third lane on the right, that's where the entrance is. So it wouldn't be backed without any traffic coming over the hill. That goes for two to three lanes.
And so that second entrance, is that on Billings? Is that Atlantic?
Atlantic.
Do you need any permits from DCO?
Should we?
Do you need any permits from DCO?
I don't believe so, no. Let's go.
It's a million traffic standards, coming over that bridge, people coming pretty quickly. And I know that right there, you have a parking to get in. It's been studied on it?
They actually, the planning boards, that's one of the things they asked us to look at, and that's why they have the entrance just went from two to three lanes. Because it would not impact people behind you. Because you pull into the right lane anyways, and then you have approximately 20 hours to get before you have to pull in.
Let's see, you can see that way back.
Yes. And they also have the other entrance in the back, too.
But that only has access to six floors?
Now, when they exit, they exit, they exit, can they exit Atlantic? Can they get to Atlantic Street if they pulled in downstairs and not?
Yes, they could. No, they're not connected. They're two separate corridors.
Two separate corridors, so if you pull in, you have to pull out?
Yes.
And get on the light and turn around?
Yes.
And how do you figure, how are you going to figure who parks where and how?
It'll be a side park. It'll be a side park.
That's what I mean, how do you figure that out? How are you going to figure out who gets on Atlantic and who don't?
I guess that would decide.
It could be easier to buy what unit to get what parking space to come out of that.
Correct. So that would decide that I'm getting the unit.
There'd be no speed difference, correct? Tell the period of when, you'd be in a hurry in a half hour.
That's right on the corner?
Yes.
There's no, that law line, that comes right up Quincy Shore Drive.
So these are all two units?
They're all two units, so they range anywhere from 900 and 900 square feet to 1500, 1500 three square.
Does it depend on, is that one unit?
Two.
Two units, okay.
The panels right now, you can go in a restricted area, there isn't getting any house enough. That's something we may can discuss with the planning board. I'm not quite sure what we decide on that.
So, I mean, and I'm not trying to, I've been driving this road my entire life. So, but not very long. That's not, it's three lanes already, but it just has that lane that drops off to turn around and to go into Commander Shay Boulevard.
This is specified on, it turns into three lanes.
No, no, I mean, right before that, because it turns into three lanes when you can go around to Commander Shay, their property's right after that.
Yeah.
So it already is three lanes there, it's on after the property. Which, I mean, I don't know, I'm sure that, having run in Ward 6, I'm sure that you have to deal with DCR at some, to some extent, because it's their road. And we're creating some blind spots on their road.
Why?
So coming, there's a left-hand turn, there's a right-hand turn out of there. I mean, there's not a lot of people that take it. I'm just... Yeah.
You can see that on the bridge, you can see that.
I understand, but not, you can see left, right? So you can see coming out of there, I'm just saying.
No, 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 I'm saying here coming around, you can see all, that's all in front of you.
Absolutely, coming this way. I'm talking turning out, though.
Coming out to turn up?
Yeah, to turn up. You're not going to have anyone in the side, because the property's kind of like this.
Exactly.
It's, just so...
So if my, so if my driveway's here?
You're going with the traffic.
Oh, is there any way to get that, is there any way to get your garage entrance on that extension road?
Well, here's, we're using...
Like where your fence is now? Is there?
We're using the same curb cut that's there, that's why we wouldn't have to go DCR.
Because there's a curb cut there right now where people are pointing to Quincy Shore
Drive. So there's not going to be a new curb cut. If there would be, then there'd be DCR requirement.
Well, what about, I mean, is, did you look at that? That's what my question is, did you look at garage entrance off of that side street?
What, you take that right?
Buildings are land.
Yeah, it's a land.
For at least to come out, like, is there another way? I mean, I...
You're saying once you go in?
Not Atlantic Street, what's that, country, what?
No, once you go on the Boulevard, once you pull in there, you can't get out in Atlantic, you can only pull back out and pull.
Yeah, it's the building street extension right there, yeah. Is there... I understand, I'm just saying how the property's set up, it's just...
So you want it, you want it to get?
What, I'm just, you're completely blind right there, like, turning out of there? So the building's kind of set, like, so if you're right up to the curb, if you're right up to the line of sight, and I mean, we can go down and look at it, whatever, but your driveway's kind of on the backside of it. People, to Russell's point, people fly around that corner and they do take, they do take that opportunity to, when the, the first lane's already open right there. And I'm just saying, for people coming in and out of there, you're just...
To merge.
Yeah. You're just, I'm not, not like you're taking chances or anything like that, your driveway's probably going to be wide enough, and I'm not worried about people turning in, people turning out.
I, and I've been speaking with, we could, we could actually, boy, you could get an entrance here and exit here. The only concern I would...
Would be coming in. I mean, I'm just talking like an exit entrance there, because like, coming in, I understand, you have cars behind you, people see you. But trying to turn out of there?
Coming out of Quincy Shore Drive here?
Yeah.
Taking a right?
Taking a right, you can only take a right.
Why would you think you would be? You can see up to the corner, it's got open.
I think you're not going to be able to see, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying the way the property sits on the block, it looks like...
Yeah, before you have all the jewelry.
So it's more where, instead of the exit? Is it here? Is it like a, is this a sidewalk?
Just so the board knows, this was, this was the design, the planning board came up wanting that day. Because one of the issues was people coming off quick, and they thought that anybody who would be here, people coming off Quincy Shore Drive, and also you're right, that might create a problem. So this was, these people coming out, as they're coming up Quincy Shore Drive, they're coming right off that exit, and also you're right through an entrance. And this is something we worked out with the planning board.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
And this chair, this says, I'll speak to the board. This design is probably both required until the two units, two spots per unit, and also access to the parking lot was something that was done with the planning board. They're the ones that recommended this setup, and they're the ones that required two spots per unit. We had met with them a number of times.
Well, you should have...
Yeah. I can, we agree.
Yes, there's nowhere else for parking.
And they made it clear that if we didn't have two spots per unit, it wasn't going to go anywhere.
Mr. Ray Dell was saying, take them right there. First, I don't think it would be an issue at all, but maybe the...
I mean, I don't think it's a huge, by any means, I don't, I'm not saying, I just think if you had the option, that would be better. And I understand it's probably not...
It would be better, because you don't have to go all the way around the world. I know he asked you to just come on the right.
Well, no, I mean, coming into the building, it'd be a pain in the ass if you had to go around the block and then come back up, and that's your only entrance in. So I can understand the access point of coming off Quincy Shore Drive. But it's the same way if you're coming the other way.
And now you're going to lose two spots, is what it's doing.
No, well, that's what I'm saying, if you're coming the other way, if you're coming, you know, heading north into the city, how do you access it? You have to go, you have to come around, you have to go through the sea view, come all the way around the property, and then come in that way anyway. So either way, you're always going to have an issue, and they've dealt with it for years just owning the lot, you know, in terms of their business. I'm not knocking at that, I just, I just think coming out of that street? I'd rather have a street that's barely used, people coming out to a street that's barely used, than people coming out to one of the busiest streets in the city. President? If it's, if it's an opportunity.
Well, I think the problem is public safety.
The planning wants it one way.
But you do want, you do want to give a full right entry off the road, so it's kind of 20 minutes to get the house right all around the block.
Well, you could, you know what you could do, I mean, you know what you could, that's what I'm saying, so people coming north are going to have to, but you could do it in terms of...
They get an easy out.
You come off Commander, you come off Quincy Shore Drive, take a left on the Commander Shay, you take a quick left, you're on Billings.
One other thing, it's...
If you're parked on the special floor, it's easy, it's harder to get in the building, but it's easier to get out.
Yeah.
And the other one's easier to get in, harder to get out, because you're going to get out and spin around and turn around.
Well, let me ask this question, Council. What we're talking about here really has nothing to do with, nothing really to do with the...
Would it be fair for me to say?
I would.
But I think the point is well taken, that the member has, well, I think that this may be something we get to...
This is why I bring this issue up every single time somebody's in front of us before the God...
And it is, it is ours, because if you don't think that that would really work for you, then you're going to write the sign note of that, too.
Well, I don't understand.
I mean, I think the planning board should be able to plan a little better than we just, really, that's their job.
And that's one, and I would say, that's one of the dilemmas I have gone forward to more.
Sure.
One, but planning goes photo zoning first, you know, and it got the chairman of the open...
So, do you think there's a brain trick to that?
You know, you know what's funny is that everything before the zoning board goes to the planning board first. And we give a recommendation, which I think is absolutely useless, but that's just my opinion. And I know, I know, but even more, it's a brain, you should not listen to this thing. But the reality is that the planning board, in other times, a brain trick is a recommendation board to the zoning board.
Right.
And we recommend, but it's really...
We've done that here, I've asked to continue it because it's something I'd rather see come from planning.
Yeah.
Council, my biggest problem on the way coming to us, par system, we approve it at 32 units, they're only hearing it at 32 units, planning's only deciding on 32 units, when their recommendation might be to us, hey, this works better, we understand this is a great building, this is a good project, but it works better at 28. And then, then you're back at square one in front of us, and that's my problem with it continuing.
That's why we made it 28.
Yeah. My, sorry. My suggestion, that has always been, as whatever board you go in front of first, you have to meet with the other departments also.
Yep.
So they have an opinion, because it does put you right back to square one. So that's why, they told us zoning first, but that's after numerous meetings with the planning department. And numerous meetings with Mr. Bounties, at that time, Mr. Margaret Hocken was there, and it was an emergency to come to establish what they want. I think that should be the process, that way you don't have to waste your time. That's a waste of time, I volunteered to, and after the other night, it kind of clicked. That's why I wanted to last, because we're all the way to the eye.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone I would like to speak in favor? Speak in favor? Please step forward, say your name and address the record booth.
Is this fine?
Yeah.
My name is Linda Lund, and I'm in the butter on Atlantic Street. I live at 14 Milling Street. And I've been involved with Murphy CW for over 40 years, and they've been a very good neighbor to all of us in the area, taking care of everybody in the area, and I'm glad that he's remaining to keep the property. And there is no issue for me leaving Billings Street to get onto the Boulevard. And he has already pre-existing driveways there, and there's never been an issue there. And I'm glad he's parking within the building. And I'm kind of excited about it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Because you've been making that right-hand turn on the Quincy Shore Drive your entire life, right?
Right. Right.
You've never had a problem, right?
No.
Okay.
No problem.
Yeah, I was just...
As a matter of fact, that's a better spot than West Quanam and North Quincy High School.
Okay, yeah.
That's horrible.
Yeah, yeah, that's a dangerous every time, even after they read it. It's better.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call, third call, caller father here, closed, no response, no response. Anyone opposed or undecided?
My name is Tom Nutley, I own the property at sixty-one, sixty-three Quincy Shore Drive. I'm a direct supporter to Mr. Murphy. I would describe myself as undecided. My yard is much, much lower than their property. So when it rains, we get water coming down, and it ponds in the yard. There's a retaining wall between the properties, I'd like to see how that's going to be built and how it's going to... So I have a number of concerns, but having said that, I have talked to Mr. Murphy. And he has agreed that as they go forward, that his engineers will keep me impressed with what they're doing, and that I'll be part of coming up with a solution. So I would just like that to...
Keep the water running out of your property?
Keep the water out, I'd like to be involved in the retaining wall, how it's going to look, whether the property is going to be fenced. So we have a bunch of concerns that we have spoken about, and he has agreed that we'll work together on it. I just wanted that to go into the public record, so that we can move forward.
Ladies?
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy, you agree with that?
Yes.
I'll put a recording feature in the machine.
Very good. Get his phone number up for me, please, because he's going to be great. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
John Rutherford, sixty-two Grand Mall Road, one question, is the lot size twelve thousand five hundred and twenty-one?
Yes.
Square feet?
Yes.
And you want twenty-eight units, correct? So what is twenty-eight divided by twelve thousand five hundred and twenty-one, what should the dwelling space per unit of this?
Lovely.
Even less than...
Gone, gone.
One just asked him.
Well, when you shoot around them, I follow them.
What is the dwelling space per unit of this lot?
Four hundred and forty-seven.
So they're asking for a variance of the already outstandingly low five hundred that we have. I mean, at minimum, I mean, we got to stay within the zoning code, within that five hundred. I think that five hundred should be raised to a thousand, maybe two thousand. We're getting way too dense, there's something wrong with the business C zoning code. And project after project, we have three more coming up. This was in planning already, but they weren't, it got continued from planning, so I don't think they ever went before planning. And again, we're to the point where, does it go to planning first, or does it go to zoning first? So I'm not sure what the planning has recommended, because I was at the planning meetings, and I've never heard this case at planning once. So I think it's too big, you know, I think they got to make it smaller, you know, we need more housing. Is it going to be apartments or condos?
Apartments.
It's going to be apartments, so we're building a lot of apartments, we're building them fast. And from what I heard too, is there also, there's an entrance right on Quincy Shore Drive to get into the place?
Yeah.
Is that what they're saying? So you go around that corner, and immediately you're going to have to take a right?
It's about the third link.
But I mean, to me, that's a public safety issue, I mean, to me, the project, they're squeezing too much in the business zone C area, and like I said...
There's more traffic, it goes slow.
Well, I mean, wait, it's a...
I'm just saying, you know, there's more traffic...
On twelve thousand square foot lot, okay, you're going to have twenty-eight different dwelling units there. So there could be possi... Is it going to be at least one person living in every unit, at least? Okay, so when all those people go outside into the backyard, what sort of open space are they going to have? Is there any open space?
Even an apartment.
Understand.
Well, it's just way too dense, it's, the zoning code, basically, you could at least hold them within the five hundred limit, at least say you only do twenty-four units of stuff. I would prefer more like eight units there, okay? And I'll stop down speaking, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else now? Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call, third call, caller father hearing closed. I have to go back, and I have to put this in the record, I do have a letter of the court conference, APW, August thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, fifty-seven Quincy Shore Drive, case number sixteen oh five nine. We have reviewed the above referenced project, our comments are as follows. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased during the development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, lay out the utility grading, ratings, and construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, install survey monuments and delineate public right-of-way. The monument shall be set by a professional landscape examiner. Five, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area and all driveway entrances. Six, we care all utility trenches in the public right-of-way with controlled density fill and infrared. Seven, apply stormwater connection permit for the fountain of public work before construction. Eight, sixteen-foot opening is not adequate to two-way traffic movement at the garage entrance. Nine, indicate whether there is any soil contamination on the site or any hazardous material from the existing building. Ten, the developer proposed a very tight building footprint in city streets and abundant properties. Will there be any easements set up for the construction activities? In addition, is there any, will there be any permanent structures, including foundations in cities or abundant properties? Eleven, demonstrate how the trash collection vehicle will enter and exit the site as it appears there is no area to turn around the vehicle. Twelve, upon completion of the project, as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference-bound benchmarks defining total site facilities, right-of-way needs to be submitted along with digital file. The as-built plan shall be stamped and signed by a professional landscape examiner, a professional engineer. So anything further, please advise. So seeing that, the city will take care of all that stuff, you know. Is it dense, yeah, is it an entrance to the city and something nice has to be, yeah. And that was the first thing that I thought, counsel, when you said that. You're coming into the city, and that's going to be an entrance, and I like what I see, I really do, I'll be voting in favor.
I do, I'm going to be voting in favor. I'll be voting in favor.
Put up a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, number sixteen...
Can we make sure that we put Mr. Nobley's note in there?
Yeah, it's in there, it'll be in the... Can he just kind of get his phone number with the, so they can change with the engineer?
Thank you.
Very good.
Chairman, number sixteen dead zero five nine, Merck, Real Peak Trust, for a various special permit to construct a twenty-eight unit residential building with parking on two-street level on the premises number fifty-seven Quincy Shore Drive, please, make a motion to grant there a special permit.
Second?
Thank you.
On the motion, seeing that all in favor, opposed, some... Thank you.
Game of view, thank you.
Yeah, we'll take two minutes. No, no, I just want to get up. Doesn't matter what I say, I'm going to let it... John? Do you know that? Oh, you know Paul? For my mom.
And if you're playing it well, thanks. Sorry. Oh, you're right, you're right. Your honor.
Oh, like I said, I mean, I don't even know what I'm doing here. You already had it.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much. Well, you obviously... So we have a special, thank you, boy, yes, just been me with them, yeah.
I know, yes.
Dave was a cheerleader. Dave was a cheerleader.
He's out this year.
What time did you...
I remember that. We still know. I remember that.
Oh, we have a statement, we have a... He was, he was coming in. You ever see us come out this way? Like the... Does that...
It was very bizarre.
It's getting off your mind. It's like... There was no fire. We found that door, it was like a fire. I mean, the property line is... There was no... I mean, the side, you have to go to the back, it was just that far. It's a V. Oh, is it V here?
But when you play in front of the town, will they have a sound?
Yeah. Yes. What's the home channel?
I know, the site is a good...
Oh, I'm cultural. So, like, just first, we've got forty-five dollar lot. Not that you're... I'm sorry, counsel. How many do you want? I feel like I have to wash it. He does that all day long.
You guys still do that.
One more. He does that all day long. He doesn't break one.
I think John, that part, I don't know. I think it was one thing, and they're developing, you know, seeing Johnson Road right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so you've got this already, and feed them.
Yeah. I didn't move it there. Oh, they're moving, they're building.
Yeah, some reason service laws is getting way out of that one.
You say moving, I can't crack it off.
It's like this, there's three sections, it's like this, but it's like, it goes together. And...
Oh.
Billy, she's coming back.
I don't represent the anchors.
I'll tell you mother, they're talking.
Hey, bring that, I'll see you at the planning meeting.
One thing, the chemistry. How's Jim doing?
He feels good.
Too bad, right? Oh, yeah, I like that. Nice, I like that idea, that'd be good. Oh, yeah. You know, we're... Yeah.
That's a bad...
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were going to...
Well, no, it's... Yeah.
I want to call your mother when I get home.
I will.
Hey, I saw a big boss, the kids' fantasy. I give a kids', this is in Quincy's place, it's a...
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Hey, who had the kid in there?
If we might... This is it. And the new business, East Number sixteen oh six oh, Avalon Bay Communities, for special permit of floodplain variance, construct a dumpster storage facility, ninety-five West Quanam, council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, members of the board, my name is Evan Fleming, I'm here on behalf of Avalon Bay Communities. Also joined by Jermaine Goss from Avalon Bay, who's handling and managing the improvements that are going to be made to this facility. This is a property at ninety-five West Quanam Street, is better known, to all of us, as Sagamore Towers. It's now known as the Eve of Quincy, owned by Avalon Bay. It's a large site, it's about a hundred seventy-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-two square foot parcel of land, with an existing, very large multifamily building on the site right now of eleven stories.
Eleven stories.
Twelve stories, built in nineteen seventy-six. It's located in a business C zoning district, and it's also located in the overlay floodplain district. Because as many of you know, that area, I know Mr. Kovey's knows that area very well, that the wetlands and the, and other areas of, you know, that are within the jurisdiction of the conservation commission, floodplain is a primary category there.
Like the Sagamore Creek.
Sagamore Creek, that area. And Avalon Bay is in the process of making substantial improvements to the property. As I was saying to Mr. Kovey, when Avalon Bay originally acquired the site, they did a number of improvements to the structure of the building. Now they're following through with some additional improvements in the exterior. And they've, and one of the things that they want to do as part of this proposal is to relocate a dumpster that's located on a pad in this area, which by the way, is actually in close proximity to the wetland resource area in this location, and relocated to, to the middle of the site, to the front of the middle of the site, in this location. And that dumpster facility will all be enclosed within a building, and will provide for dumpster and recycling services, but it will also provide for building maintenance, so that they'll have things like appliances and parks, to fix appliances within the units, all housed within a building in the structure of the unit. The difficult thing about this site, because of the wetland concerns and issue, because of the existing building, as it was constructed, there's very little, there's very few areas in which they can place the dumpster. This area is a main entranceway, so they had to place it in this location. And as a result, there's two issues or requests for relief, one being a floodplain special permit, and secondly, we need setback relief from the front setback, it's five feet off the property line. When I spoke with Mr. Duka about this, he indicated, and I also spoke with Ian Kane, the city councillor, their primary concern was what the visual impact of the building will be. So first of all, and I apologize, this is only a portion of the site, because in addition to relocating the dumpster building here, this pad will actually be made into a patio, an outdoor patio for the residents, and will be improved by Hawk Design, who is the landscape architect, as well as all the additional landscaping improvements that are going to be made here. But as I indicated, Mr. Duka and Ian Kane had, their primary concern was what the building would look like from the front. So this landscaping will all be installed all on the front of the property line. And you can actually see the building where it will exist in the front. It will be hidden essentially by the landscaping, because the site is actually lower than the street grade. So even though the building is going to be one story in height, it'll be sunken down to the point where there'll be very little visual impact to the...
Half story.
It's essentially a half story, you can get that. And with the large building right behind it, I think, I don't think people will even notice that it's there. And a significant landscaping improvements that are going to be made as part of this plan. In addition to this body, we've also made a request for determination of the conservation commission. And that's been filed and prepared by H.W. Moore. That application has been filed with the City Council Conservation Commission. We don't anticipate that they're going to take jurisdiction over this matter, because the impact is very little, in fact, any impact that it has is more positive impact, as we're going to be basically eliminating some impervious area in the area of the dumpster pad and replacing it with patio, surface, and landscaping. So that's the, that's the presentation, the applicant. I did come here and apply, filed this application after I spoke with Mr. Duka, because he indicated that he would prefer that... because he indicated that he would prefer the board act on this. Uh, he doesn't have the jurisdiction or the authority to act on a, uh, variance or a special permit.
Can you get rid of that probably dumpster cover?
They will get rid of the, the one that exists today. It's a, it's a significant improvement to the property.
Any questions?
This is existing.
That's existing condition, no question. Thank you.
Just inquisitive. How long ago did they purchase?
Uh, two thousand eleven, twelve.
Thank you. For anyone here that wants to speak in favor. First call, second call. Third call, call up, our hearing closed. I have a letter here, it's number seven, two thousand sixteen, ninety-five West Quonter Street, case number sixteen oh six oh. We reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. For anyone opposed around the side? Opposed around the side, first call, second call. We're called closed. I'll be voting in favor.
It was always kind of ugly old spot, so it's going to be much, much nicer, and I'll be voting in favor.
All positive. Have a motion, please.
This is the chairman of the matter sixteen dash zero six zero, Avalon Bay Communities, have a special permit floodplain variance, construction dumpster recycling storage facility and patio. Last thing, it's not blood zones, case number ninety-five West Quonter Street. Make a motion to grant the special permit.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, stand down, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, council. Continuing on a new business, last case number sixteen oh six one. Robert Matty, for variance finding to subdivide the property and construct a duplex, the promise number fourteen twenty-two Dartmouth Street. The applicant will represent, council.
Mr. Chairman, members, good evening. For the record, my name is Christopher Harrington, I'm the attorney representing Robert Matty. My law office is at twenty-one McGrath Highway, uh, here in the city of Quincy. As you know, uh, this is an application for variances for the, uh, property at, um, fourteen to twenty-two Dartmouth Street. I'd like to, um, hand to you the schedule of, uh, the other lots that are located on Dartmouth Street, as shown on the assessors plan to the package, and, uh, the sizes of all those lots. Mr. Chairman, as, uh, as we stated, this is a request for a finding, uh, in dimensional variances, to subdivide this property on Dartmouth Street and create two house lots, which contain two family houses. The existing, um, home is a two-family home. It sits on twelve thousand square feet of land with a hundred and twenty feet of frontage. Our request is to create two six thousand square foot lots, each with sixty feet of frontage. The ordinance requires is six thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, even though we don't make it, we're pretty close. We're shy by seven hundred and fifty square feet, uh, on each lot. And we're also shy fifteen feet of frontage on each lot. Seventy-five feet is required in residence B. These homes are, uh, the existing homes go into state. Uh, Mr. Matty bought this property a few years ago, he lives there with his children. Then when he purchased the property, it was, it was old, it was run down, it was needed a lot of work. He's completely lost inside and outside the existing two-family home. Uh, and he wants to keep that house, and, uh, he's put a lot of money into it. Obviously doesn't want to tear it down and redevelop the property with something larger or townhouses or anything like that. As you know, our residence B requires three thousand square feet of land per unit, um, for a residence B property. And so even though we're slightly shy on the size of the lots, um, six thousand square feet of land is what's required for a duplex in residence B, and we meet that criteria. These buildings are about two and a half stories, they're less than the maximum three stories allowed in residence B. And, um, most importantly, we've designed the site to have adequate parking for the people who live in these buildings. The new house has a driveway property, five parking spaces out back, so there are two spaces per unit for that house, plus one guest spotfall off-street. The existing house, which is staying, has had its driveway extended to put four parking spaces in the back behind that house, which also gives that house, uh, two spaces per unit. That parking layout can be modified to add a fifth space behind that building as well, which will also give the existing two-family, um, two spaces per unit plus, plus one guest space. A finding that we're asking for is because the existing, uh, two-family has a non-conforming front that's set back, so we're asking for a finding that's not substantial or detrimental, uh, to modify that, that non-conforming structure. With us this evening is, uh, Jim Burke, who's our engineer. Uh, he's designed the site, and he'd like to tell you about the, uh, stormwater management system that he designed for this property. Thanks, Chris. Again, Madam, Jim Burke with, uh, South Burke Associates. We, uh, basically designed this for the, uh, configuration of homes, uh, made for the existing home we made, uh, with parking, uh, in the rear of the lot. For those building, we'll have new service utilities, so, and water, of course, uh, but for the stormwater, we're capturing all the roof for both existing and proposed homes, as well as the parking lots, putting them underground with, uh, six cul-de-tac units for each lot. Panels are for two ten, twenty-five, one hundred year storm vents, uh, and reduces the flow off-site, uh, from existing two floors. So less, less water's going to be coming off that site, uh, less development is built.
Say nothing?
There's going to be less runoff, less stormwater coming off the site, uh, once, uh.
Definitely that's current.
Thank you. So, uh, this, uh, basically handles hundred year storm event, which, uh, is.
Every eight weeks?
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks, yeah, exactly. Eight inches of rain, eight inches of rain in twenty-four hours, so. Uh, we use conservative value for soils, um, point two seven, it's a, it's a conservative design. Have any questions, I'll be, uh, not the answer.
Is that an existing problem now?
Stormwater runoff? No, it's not an existing problem. Everything, the stormwater right now runs to the south, really low spots like down this corner here, so. Runs this way, we're maintaining the grades, uh, all the runoff for this lot will be captured here, and this will be slightly, this is slightly higher than this here, and then this will be pond in the back of this catch basin, and, uh.
You say they have, they'll come at eight inches of rain?
Yep, that's the design flow.
Eight, how big is that?
Eight point two seven. That's, that's the hundred year storm event for. Mr. Chairman, we did have a neighborhood meeting for this, uh, for this project. It was over a year ago. Uh, the project was, was delayed for about a year, while Mr. Matty worked on getting his, his finances together to make the project happen. One of the changes that we made since, um, that neighborhood meeting is that, on the plan that we showed to the neighbors at that meeting, uh, there were two versions of it. One, one version had a driveway here, which just ran up the whole side of the building, and that was basically stacked parking for this unit. And there was a driveway on this side, which was stacked parking for this unit. We, we, and then the second version had the driveway exactly as it is now, but a mirror image. The driveway ran all the way up the side, came around, and parking spaces were back. We, we changed that, because there is a single family home next to us, and we wanted this side yard to be green, landscaped and green, and, and not a driveway. Uh, so, you know, there's landscaping on this side of the house, uh, blue fencing, and we decided that, you know, Mr. Matty lives here in this house, so he can work with the new driveway for his houses instead of, if they were on the other side. So that was kind of a primary change that we made. The, uh, the schedule that I passed out to you at the beginning of the hearing, just, it lists the houses that are right there on Dartmouth Street, and it's not a big street. Even with our twelve thousand square foot lot averaged in, the average lot size on Dartmouth Street is fifty-five hundred square feet. So even if you approve this, these lots are still bigger, um, than the average, the average size of lot on the street. And finally, I know whenever you consider whether or not to grant a variance, you always have to ask whether desirable relief can be granted without substantial derogating from the purpose or intent of the ordinance. I think that where the lots are larger, the, the average lot on the street, as well as the fact that lots have more frontage than six hundred and ten lots on the street, this project can be done without being detrimental to the neighborhood, especially considering the combination for our street park. Thank you.
On, on the fifth spot on lot two, is that going to be, can we put one right beside, uh, four, number one?
On this?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could add a fifth spot there.
All right, so you got five on each side?
Yeah, we could, yes, we could do that.
But it's just, guess, parking, across three parking. Someone better guess, they got a box on the, on the side, outside. Thank you, council. Any questions, council? Is there anyone, uh, want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor in this project? First call, second call?
Yep. My name's Brian Foley.
What's your name?
Brian Foley.
Foley?
I live on, uh, Pin Summer Street. My garage is, it's not my house, it's rent. The garage is, uh, it's on Dartmouth Street. Right across from the driveway that goes to the garage, it's there now, and, uh, talked to Mr. Matty, and, uh, he told me to keep the no parking signs where they are, and they added that, that extra space, um, to the garage, this was the last neighborhood meeting. And, uh, that's pretty much all that, that I was looking for when we had that meeting. We seem to take care of it.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Is there anyone else like to speak in favor? Second call, third call, call up, our hearing closed. I have a letter here from the D.P.W., September seventh, two thousand sixteen, twelve twenty-two Dartmouth Street, case number sixteen oh six one. We have reviewed the above referenced project. Our comments are as follows. One, prepare maintenance plan for the proposed drainage system. Two, show direction of flow on sewer main in the proposed inverted connection. Three, install survey monuments to delineate public right-of-way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Four, apply stormwater connection permit from the Department of Public Works before construction. Five, upon completing the project, the as-built plan showing our utility building footprints, reference bound benchmark, defining total site facilities right-of-way needs to be submitted along with digital file. The as-built plan shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer, if anything further required for the device. Is there anyone here opposed around the side? Please step forward, name and address for record, please.
My name's Mrs. Cameron, I live right across the street. I have conducted twenty-one Dartmouth Street. Uh, I'm concerned about park. And we want to make sure that there's no, uh, on-street park, no, um, I'm, based upon the plans, yes, um, duplex does look like it's got two bedrooms and an office, but we all know that the office would probably be a bedroom, so that's three parking spots per unit, or three bedrooms per unit. So it's a minimum, and a six. Plus you've got two bedrooms and two family each unit, so a minimum of ten spots. We don't want any, anybody parked on the street.
What?
We also have to keep in mind public trans, uh, public safety, and we also have to keep in mind trash removal, too.
Correct. What, what I asked for is a fifth spot in, in unit one. They have five on the other, and there could be a possibility for a six, even in the other one. It's a two-bedroom unit, correct?
They are.
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms with an office.
Two bedrooms with an office. But the office could very well be a.
Just put it in there, it's two bedrooms, and so they can. Move to know if people sleep in the kitchen sometime. Really, and I get it, I mean, if I saw a four office, I'd be wondering, or twenty room in a, it's two, two bedrooms.
Mr. Chairman, the office doesn't have a closet, so it's not, it's not meaningful, yeah.
Yeah, we all know about that, too.
Just trying to follow the law.
I hear you.
There existing no parking signs on the street, is that what you said?
That's what I said.
It's one.
It's one.
Any other questions? Is anyone else opposed around the side?
I have a letter here from, um, the residents of eight Dartmouth Street, they asked me to present this.
You have a letter?
Yeah, she was, she was asked to write a letter.
Scumarian Tomato. Fire, eight Dartmouth Street. We got in the addition of two family on Dartmouth Street, bought before the age, my son and I are not in favor that we feel that Dartmouth Street did not equip all properties or vehicles on the street, area and the park.
Not yet.
Fire. You can't read the second name, that's rich.
Richard. Richie B.
Richie B. Is there anyone else opposed around the side? Counsel, you want to say a word?
Sure. Evening, folks. Brad Croll, sixty-five K Street, have the privilege of, uh, representing Ward Two, the great city of Quincy. The, um, you know, a couple of things, because I, I heard it, I heard it mentioned here today. It's important from a historical perspective, just to get a, a character check on the applicant. I, I think, in my own opinion, that's, that's what I try to do. But I heard it made mention here that he did take a property that was probably on the top five hit list in Ward Two, and he kind of transformed that into what it was. You know, he's also a local guy, dealt with him on different projects. We had a neighborhood meeting, it was on April twelfth of two thousand fifteen, I hosted it at the Avenue, Citizen Bank. And there was some dialogue had, at that meeting, from the residents with the applicant, uh, looking for concessions, and at the time, bedroom count. Which originally was two and three, so it was duplex style, three bedrooms on one side, two on the other, and it's now a two and two. I understand very clearly, you know, the concerns from the, from the neighborhood, particularly as it comes to parking. You know that I frequent this board, and one of my peeps is, uh, you know, when it comes to development, uh, you need to be adequately parked, no question. You know, he did have the opportunity to take, take a ride over there and, and look at the site. There's no question that it's a pretty level, clear lot. I was contacted by the nearest butter to the left. She had, uh, expressed to me her, uh, her sentiment, which was not in favor of two family. She had, she had the thought, she didn't own the house at the time, but her thoughts were that, uh, you know, it would be further suited, uh, if there was any development in more of a single-family fashion. I did speak with him, I really don't want to speak for him, but he just kind of did share that with me, you know, to, uh, to Lisa's point about, you know, the two bedrooms, and the two bedrooms, and the office potentially becoming a bedroom. He did just express that if you're willing to forego the, uh, quote-unquote, office, and make it a, uh, you know, a clear two-bedroom, two-bed. So, you know, again, I understand that, um, you know, it is a, it is a level lot, something will go there. It's just, I guess, in terms of, uh, you know, placement, what indeed will go there. I just, again, wanted to reiterate that we do have a, uh, you know, an applicant that seems, in the past and in present, to, to want to work with the neighborhood, so.
Glad to hear that.
I just kind of submit that to you, and, uh, let you do, what you do.
Thank you, council. Right, it'd be a time, thanks for hanging in all night.
My pleasure. My pleasure.
I love that. Counsel, before we decide this, you said the applicant's willing to take that lot. This is odd there. I think it's strictly.
I don't want to speak for the applicant, but he could probably speak for himself.
There you go.
No, do you know what I mean?
This is, this is wrong. Yeah, I believe.
So you have, your master might be up here instead of that, you know, whatever, vice versa, whatever you want to do. Don't matter. You're still going to have a bathroom, right?
Correct.
Dan, Dan, whatever. So that, that makes me happy. It really does. You in agreement with that?
Take the office wide.
Think of this young professional.
And you don't have to worry about it down the road when it gets sold. You get a two-bedroom, two-bedroom defined. Well, they build a wall, then they, then they got to go to plan, and the planner will look it up. They can only have two bedrooms in a home. Who's going to look? My favorite style of look. There you go.
Mr. Chairman, the office is there for, you know, young professionals who work at home, to have an office if they choose to.
All right, all right. How about, how about making, how about making that office eight feet wide and make the bedroom bigger?
Make the office smaller, so it's just bigger.
Yeah, you got a chair and a, a computer and put some books in it. Right now, it's probably what, you got forty foot? How big is this? How's forty feet? It says ten feet each. Ten feet each, correct?
I'm sorry, sir. I don't know. It's something here.
Well, you have four rooms there. It's five feet long, so it should be, right?
Yeah.
Ten feet each?
Yeah.
So you make that bedroom wider than the other one eight. That's an office.
Thanks, sir.
Sound good?
Yes.
So any, a little teeny?
Yeah, we'll make it a bedroom.
So the office will be maximum eight feet, the whole property. And then that bedroom would just be, it should be twelve feet in. Works out good.
Get my California king in there now.
There you go.
To get my California king in there now.
Just open the door and block, right? It is. Anything else, gentlemen? Anything else? Anything else? I'll be voting in favor with that change, so?
Yes.
As will I.
Mr. Chairman, matter of sixteen dash zero six one, Robert Matty for a variance finding to subdivide the property, constructing a new duplex housing in apartment number fourteen dash twenty-two Dartmouth Street, including making motion to grant a variance for the following condition, that the, of the items that include the DPW letter, that there would be a fifth parking space put into.
Unit two.
Unit two.
Lot two.
Lot two. And that the office in both properties, the both offices will be narrowed down to eight feet.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, seen now, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, so move. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second? On the motion, seen now, all in favor?